Call meeting order, six oh one. Judy, take role. Bring us to number two on the consent agenda. All the following items which concerning reports and items of routine nature normally approved by board members would be approved by one vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on all of these items. The consent agenda consists of the discussion, consideration, and approval of the following. And just to skate through F, I don't know, let Price make his way through that. You guys have any questions, just ask him.
I'll go with B. You have all fun. Should be in your package. You'll have a list of all of them. These are mostly blanket purchase orders that will be open if we're approving tonight. Most of those are for the year. Of course, the bigger ones are on utility. As you can see, number seven there, for hop up for electric, for a hundred and twenty thousand. That's a little more than what it costs us total this year, but usually those things are just a little more for one year or the next. And then eighteen, City of Cherokee, for twenty-six thousand. And then number thirty-five is on gas, and that's a very two thousand. Twenty-three, thirty-five. Eagle thirty-five, twenty-two.
Yeah. Oh, oh gee, yeah. I just heard gas on fire.
And those are our utilities. And I wanted to point those out first because I want to bring up something at this point that we'll be working into. Actually, starting on Wednesday, through COSA, they have an energy efficiency program. And so they're going to come out, and I want to have them along with me, probably Joey, on Wednesday. We're going to go through all of our facilities, and they're going to just take a look. They, through this program, they have, they try to get everybody down to where they spend somewhere around seventy-five cents a square foot in energy cost. Ours right now is about a dollar thirty-nine a square foot. So they really feel like our school is a lot of holes and some room that could work there. It's a three-year program. It does cost sixty-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for the first year to sign up. Twelve-hundred-and-fifty the second year, and three hundred dollars the year after that. So it costs some money upfront. But I think that looking at our, our energy costs, and you know, there's kind of a couple ways to look at it. One, we can look at it upfront, trying to go out there and save money, but as we've seen over the last couple of years, energy costs have been going up. So rather than just saving money, trying to avoid further costs, our insurance has gone up also. I'll know more once Wednesday is here, because we could get in and do this, but they'll go through all of our buildings. And the first year is going to be basically about addressing business behaviors and habits, turning the lights off, leaving room, unplugging things when you're not using them, making sure that our building stats are set correctly. If there's a portion of the building that's not being used, their condition doesn't look right. Just really looking and addressing those things, and then finding somebody, either that's on staff, or if there's somebody in the community that would be good to come out and kind of be in charge of being that officer, going around and really holding everybody accountable, because it's going to take everybody in an effort to do that. But Fort Gibson is a much bigger school district, and that's the one they use. They started doing this several years ago. They, their energy cost is at about, I think it's less than seventy-five cents a square foot now. For that school, that side, I believe they're almost a five-day school. Their total utility cost this past year was one-two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and we're spending a hundred-and-seventy-five.
I think the real recommendations are going to be coming for, you know, these doors got to be replaced, these windows got to be replaced. Possibly, we should, a lot of that could be done with a thermal imaging scan.
I want somebody to come in and tell us, you're doing that wrong.
Right.
We need to hear that. Because we can guess, we can watch sensors, but we need somebody to come in and hold it, because we're going to have to take everybody to do that. I don't disagree. I think there are probably small ones like those and floors and things like that. But if we don't address the bad habits, then those things don't happen. So I really think that this would be something that we really need to consider. But like I said, I'll know more after Wednesday when I walk through.
So is it something like they'll give you their list of recommendations, and then after that, then you can agree to?
They will come out, and they will look at our facility, see what we've got, make some recommendations. If they think we're a good fit for the program, then they will assign somebody to kind of train that, our energy officer, that's what they call them. They will kind of train them on what to do, how to set those stats, how to recognize patterns in electricity use, and do all that for us. So I, like I said, I wanted to point these three things out, because those are, those are our utility costs. Those are the things that we would be, you know, trying to get out in front of and see if we can save some money. You know, like I said, we're spending about thirty-nine cents a square foot.
When will they come out?
Wednesday.
Oh, okay.
Not as quick as like here. I was hoping to get them here before, pretty good, this speed, but that's just, that's as quick as they can get here. So, and that won't cost us anything until we sign an agreement with them. They're pretty, this is what they do when they go around the school.
Is that with the city or COSA or?
Well, here's the part.
Oh, four percent. Okay.
So anyway, I wanted to bring attention to those three, and then, of course, you know, our property insurance, that one, another thirty thousand dollars.
Which one's in?
Number forty-six. And so as those costs go up, we have to find other ways to try to make up for that. The insurance companies will tell you that's because supplies, building materials, everything, checks that they're writing, which are not us, but other people are, you know, that cost is going up, so I guess that trips down to us. Building fund and child nutrition. Child nutrition has keystone, has the biggest expense there in dishwasher rental, building fund, has some spare services. Some other things just to go to start with the year, nothing, nothing big there. We will have one big expense coming in a few weeks, and that will be the resealed parking lots in that Ford complex on Oakdale Elementary, and that's one thousand to do that. And we'll do that out of building fund. But it's starting to crack. If we don't figure it out, it'll look like the parking lot we have up there is out of the gym, so.
Are they doing the block?
They're guarding.
Okay.
Who would do that?
The lowest bid was Steve Barrett. So we had three, two others that came in, and this is the lowest. So we should be able to get started on that in a few weeks. So hopefully that will all be done, because it starts. I don't have anything else on those. If there are questions, just put them away, but otherwise, we've got some internal transfers there on E1 and 2. Interest, communication, fund, and that's, that's something that we've been doing with that every year. And then twenty-one-hundred ninety-two cents from athletics, two boys and girls' basketball accounts. Will that be just put out in the middle? Is that how, is that what it's called?
Each, each, twenty-one each.
Okay. Twenty-one each.
Yeah.
Any questions on that?
And then treasures report. That should be in there, in the packet as well. Just want to mention there, our general fund carryover, if you look at our total cash available and the outstanding checks that we still have, that puts the general fund at one-point-two million and twenty-one thousand, so just a little over one-point-two. And that, that could change just a little bit based on our reserve amount, but that's pretty, pretty close to where, a couple of months ago, I thought it would be, you know, twelve, one-point-one, one-point-three. So that's where we're at. Carryover wise for general fund, building fund, looking at those numbers, it's going to be about two-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand in our building fund carryover. And then our cafeteria fund, just a little over a hundred thousand. Of course, they have big expenses to pay out of that, probably some out of line, so that'll be a little bit lower than that, but it's still in pretty good shape. I do want to mention and draw attention to the negative amounts in the sinking fund once again, because of tax protests, everyone is collecting. So there's paperwork, I've already spoken to our order, and make sure that we follow the correct steps there in what we have to do, but this is something next year on appropriations we'll have to make some adjustments for, but there's really not much we can do about that once those belligerents are set, and then they protest after that for, as in this case, this past year, they did a tax rule correction at the last minute. So that's what that is for, and as I said, that has happened before, and it's just a matter of doing our paperwork and doing all those things we have to do there to cover that, but hopefully next year we can make adjustments, and it won't be those surprises. So overall, in pretty good shape, right there. First production was, was up quite a bit more, the first three months or two months. This year looked to be quite a bit less than they were last year, and so I'll have a little more detailed report in the next couple of months for you on next year's budget and what I think we're at. We're okay, not as if it's going to be handed or anything like that, but we're going to have to be pretty smart about some things moving forward.
Any other comments or questions, A through F? Is that all you have, Bryce?
It's all of them.
Okay. If not, we'll make a motion to approve A through F. That includes E1 and 2 and the approval of the two transfers that are listed. Do I have a second? Does there a second, Judy?
Littleville?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Number three, principal reports.
And then number two, force our vote off right now, I told them we would catch everything that went off.
Sounds good. Number four, discussion and vote to approve a contract with Janet Hickman for OT services for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
We've worked with Janet for a number of years now, and I would recommend that we approve that contract with her again for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Questions, comments?
Does there is made a motion, do I have a second? Heather second, Judy?
Littleville?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Number five, discussion and vote to approve the district transfer capacity numbers.
That's something we have to do poorly. We actually increased a few of our grade levels back up to forty, just because we're able to, with two teachers in each of those lower grades, we're able to take up to forty pretty, pretty easily on projected class numbers. Projected class numbers are still lower than that, so I guess it's a little bit of a win. The only one that would tap down below would be all senior class, and the reason for that is it's a small class, and as of right now, the way that the schedule is set up is most, that class would all be, like, there's only one senior in those classes, so we need to put them all together, so we can't really have one thirty, or we're going to have to just wait until the kids turn. So that's the reason it's lower on capacity numbers. I think we have about twenty, twenty-four in there right now, so there's still some room there if we have to transfer, but we haven't had any transfers in some of those other grades. But that's the reason for that. The rest of those classes are split, there's usually two sections of those.
Questions, comments?
Make a motion to approve the district transfer capacity.
Does there any motion, do I have a second? Oh, second. Curtis second, Judy?
Littleville?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Number six, discussion and vote to approve an interlocal agreement with City of Cherokee and Alphatah County.
Again, that's something that we've been doing annually. That allows us, the city, county, all kind of provide some kind of services for one another as needed throughout the year, but we have to have that signed agreement to make that happen.
Questions on that? Motion to approve, do I have a second? Does there a second? Judy?
Littleville?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Number seven, discussion and vote to approve the CLB, CB policy that would allow select trained personnel to be armed.
Hey, I'm just going to read from the policy itself, the intent, because I think that it stays very well, just what says the intent of the policy. And the intent of this policy is to primarily protect the children and employees of Cherokee Public Schools. Specifically, this policy allows for the equipping of one or more trained and certified employees to defend our children, staff, and potentially others in the event that their serious bodily injury may occur. You all have a copy of this, and, you know, we've had some discussions in the past regarding this policy. This policy comes from the OSFBA, and it's the same policy that's used in other area schools, or a few schools in our area that have this already, and have for a few years. And so this has been adapted to, you know, for quite us as Cherokee Public Schools, and, you know, I just, I hate to think that this is something that we have to have. I really do, to be quite honest. But I think that every time, you know, you turn on the news, and you see a school shooting, I think everybody's first thought is, what are we doing? What are we doing to protect our kids and make sure that those things don't happen, or if they do happen, how can we minimize, assess those things? And as you've all seen, you can lock the doors, do all of that stuff right every day. But when evil wants to rear its head and get into a building, it's going to do it. And I think that it's time that we take some other steps to provide another layer of protection for our kids. This is not, I think, what some people feel like it may be, where you have teachers that are just openly carrying a gun in school. That's not what this is. This policy is very detailed in the requirements that it would take for an employee of the school to be certified to, to seal carry. It would be kept confidential who those people are. To have that certification and meet those requirements, that would be something that myself, I do know, you and the board would know, are going to pass that. That's it. It would be kept confidential, safeguarded. Just to touch on some of the specific things in here, and I want to make sure those that might be listening to this meeting later understand this, that, you know, this is not something that we take lightly, there's a lot of responsibility that goes into this. And so, you know, part of this process would be, number one, and these things are all outlined in the policy, for number one, this board would have to adopt a policy related to House Bill one fourteen. The employee must have a valid Oklahoma state issued armed security license, or a valid Oklahoma state issued reserve peace officer certification or license. The employee must also have a valid Oklahoma Sub-Defense Act license. The employee must complete a one-time training with fast, faster safe lodge, or, or a similar tactical response training that would be approved by the board. The board, at its discretion, may require more ongoing tactical training, and the employee must either have firearm on their person, or locked in a place that pursuant to stay long. This policy would give the superintendent final authority to determine and designate school employees who will be authorized to obtain and use any armed security guard license or reserve peace officer certification in connection with their employment as a school personnel. So the only gun that would be used would be a handgun, and the ammunition used in that gun would have to be approved, or meet the requirements within this policy. Without just, you know, reading every detail in here, it is pretty exclusive, or not exclusive, but it covers.
Extensive.
Extensive, thank you. It covers almost every, I think, area that you could possibly think of. It goes into a lot of detail about the type of firearm that could be carried. A twenty-two caliber would not be allowed. It goes in detail about the types of holster, what concealed carry means. Once a person became certified in those two, with those two certificates or licenses, they would also be required to qualify at a range three times a year, and that to be done, like I said, three times a year, or quarterly. And so if somebody, if somebody wants to do this and feels very strongly about it, it's kind of a volunteer basis, but it's up to us. It's up to me first, and as well as you as a board, on whether or not we allow them to do that, to go through that training. Like I said, this isn't just going to be anybody that wants to do it can go do it. We'll have to use a lot of discretion in that. Part of the fleet certification, of course, is that they have to take and complete what's called an MBI, and that's a psychological evaluation, basically to see if you're fit to carry any of that. So that's part of, that is built into that as well. As I said, it does outline that firearm would be on the person at all times, or locked in a secure area, according to stay long. There's, like I said, there's several requirements in here. What I would like to do is just, now, is just, you know, have a discussion if there's anything that you all feel like maybe isn't addressed in this, how we could address it if we need to. It would be our policy, so it would be in writing just in here, so if there's anything there, that's what, that's what this is for.
I think one thing I would like to see in there is something about the drug testing.
Okay.
I'd like, we're going to do that. We need to make sure that we're covering every aspect of it.
I agree with that. I, I think mandatory drug test for anybody that'd be, fall underneath those certifications, I definitely think is justified, and we can add that to that, to this policy. I'd like, and the annual mandatory, you know, maybe the beginning of the year, mandatory drug test with two or three others at random throughout the year would be sufficient if we added that in there.
I think that would be sufficient.
Good point. I, I don't know, we've had a lot of personal communication through our security meetings throughout the ongoing, you know, it's been an ongoing discussion. And I'm just glad that we're here now, and we're more about proactive things than reactive than ever has been. Personally, I'm happy with the way the policy is right now, and also just know that if we think of something as this thing evolves for our school, we can add, take away, or change things, update it on a regular basis, whatever we see, if we'd like to do. It's a good start. We're not re-investing a wheel here, which is for, this policy comes from other schools that are doing this exact policy. Like Bryce said, it kind of may have worked for us. That's right.
Another thing, and it's not part of the policy, because I don't necessarily know that it's required, but we would, we would have signs posted at all main points of entry, you know, large, not huge billboard signs, but large enough that it's pretty visible, to let people know that our staff may be armed and will protect our, our kids in fact at all costs. I want to say that, you know, I, I informed our teachers back in May and our staff at the end of the year that we would be looking at this policy, and that if any of them, you know, had any big concerns about it, wanted to come talk to me and have a discussion about that, that, of course, I was, you know, more than willing to do that, and I haven't had any negative conversations with anybody about this. I think they probably feel like I do, that I hate that we have to even consider it, but I think it's, it's become necessary that we give them every, you know, every option possible of protection. I will say that I have had I will say that I have had, not several, but also not few, staff already expressed some interest in this. So, you know, we do have some that are interested in it. And again, it would be totally up to us, starting with me, as the discretion of who that would be, and if they're, we go through those trainings. I think that, you know, it would be up to us as a district to be responsible for paying for those right now. It looks like those costs would be anywhere from a thousand to $1,200 a person to go through the training. As of right now, they would be responsible for purchasing handgun and ammunition.
That's approved.
That's approved by the policy. And then at a later time, you know, if it was, if we were able to do it financially and could help support something else along those lines with, with those people, we would take a look at that. I said, I, I'm, I'm all, I'm all for it. I think, like I said, I think that it's our responsibility to protect these kids and who better to, to put that trust into than the people that we trust and with every single day when they come in. Here's our teacher. See it on TV all the time. Every time there's, you know, one of these shootings, you hear the stories about the teachers stepping in front, taking, taking charge. And I mean, I can say without a doubt, there's not a person on our staff that I don't trust 100% of my kids. So, and I feel the same way about this also.
Any other discussion before we move on? I know we've talked about it extensively throughout the years of, it's just, it was just kind of built to this point, you know, as we watch the news. All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the CLB CB policy that would allow select trained personnel to be armed for Cherokee Public Schools with the amendment of adding an annual drug testing and two to three randoms throughout a single calendar year. Do I have a second? Two second? Curtis? Curtis second? Judy?
Louisville?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
All right, number eight, discussion and vote to approve the revised support personnel salary schedules.
As you all know, the state approved the teacher pay raise. And we're getting most of that covered through allocations. What they did not really provide was anything for support. And I, I just, I think that it's well overdue. So what I did was I took our paid, our paid schedule for our support staff. I went through and increased everything by $1 an hour. And I know that doesn't really sound like a lot on the surface. And I don't know that it is enough for the, for these people and everything that they do for our school. Judy might have to correct me here, but I think 2017 was the last time that they had been given a raise on this. And so we're not getting funding from the state. It's gonna cost us approximately $30,000 this year to bump everybody $1 an hour on this, depending on their contract and, and where they fall on the pay scale. We're looking at anywhere from a little over $1,000 to just a little over $2,000 a year raise for those people. So like I said, you know, it doesn't seem like much. And I don't know that it's ever really enough, but I do feel like that we need to take a step in that direction. And it'll be, it'll be an added cost, but I guess one that needs to happen and we'll figure out a way to make sure that we can do it responsibly. So, I said, I'm just, I've taken this list, adjusted everything by dollar. Some of them are broken out, whether or not they're a 10-month or a 12-month contract, so you can kind of get an idea of that, but it's been six years.
Yeah, that's.
Since, since that's happened. So long overdue. And hopefully, you know, maybe this can be something that we can reevaluate annually. Hopefully the state will come up with something eventually to help recognize, you know, these staff members too. Teacher definitely needed a raise, but everyone else did also.
Yep. Questions on the support personnel salary schedules? I have no questions. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Desiree made a motion, do I have a second? Heather second, Judy?
Louisville?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Gibson?
Sorry.
Sorry, I jumped on the thing. Call up Judy. Number nine, discussion and vote to approve the following names, name changes for the outdated signature cards on their bank accounts we have at ACB.
It's just housekeeping things there. There was a phone call from the bank discovered we had some things we needed to get updated. So it may not have caused any problems, but we'll fix it.
Yeah, okay. All right. I'll make a motion to approve the following name changes that are listed below. Hold on a second. Curtis second, Judy?
Louisville?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
And the ones that we're adding, like you and whoever else hasn't gone up there already with your ID and stuff to do all, where you don't have used them.
Okay, number 10, superintendents' report.
I just wanna say how much appreciate our, all our summer help, whether that was mowing or painting, waxing floors. Those guys have all done a great job and great help. They've done some painting floors as well. And they really, they've got a lot done in a short amount of time and they have to work around everybody's schedule. And so just really appreciate them. Also wanna say thank you to all of our summer teachers and staff that have helped in our summer school and at the elementary over here at the high school. I think that worked really well. I think Mr. Patterson said they have about 40 kids attending at the elementary this year, so that was good. We will continue to do that one more year with everyone that we, we have. So this next summer would most likely be the last year that we offer that, as that might even run out. We attended on June 26th to 27th. We went to our capturing kids art train in the city and had two days down there together as a staff. I know we shared a lot of the pictures and things on Facebook and everybody got to see that. Everyone got to see Mrs. Raffgiver and Coach Cuffey go head to head and rock, paper, scissors. But it was, it was fun, it was entertaining, and really, I think, pushed, you know, a lot of us out of our comfort zones, but really, I think, put some things in perspective for us. So that program is all about just building strong relationships, whether that's the teacher and the student, students to student, teachers to teachers, just all around. And I think that I heard multiple times from, from several teachers that that may have been, you know, one of the most impactful PDs, professional developments that they've been to. And so I think they really enjoyed it. I think they got a lot out of it. And I'm, I'm excited just to see a whole process start when we come back to school and just see, you know, the positivity that I think that it will bring in both buildings. There's just, there's just a lot of things. And I really feel like this could be one of those, one of those things that we look back on and say, you know, that's, that was the thing that got us started, that, that really took us from good to great. So that's, that's my hope. And like I said, it's a good program. They're gonna be with us really, you know, all along the way, providing support, that's part of it. We get a strategist that will come out and to complete some surveys every now and then. A lot of students and teachers, but they take all that in and they help and say, you're doing this really well, try working on this. So just, it's not one of those meetings that you go to sometimes and try this new thing and you're like, no, we'll figure out how to do it. So I'm excited about it, I know they're excited about it. And so we'll, we'll hit the ground running with that when we get back in August, which is just around the corner. That's gonna be, that's gonna be a really good thing. Just wanted to update and mention with Coach Caulfield leaving, we've done some rearranging on coaching assignments. And so through some lengthy conversations, Coach Pruitt, Coach Person Pruitt came to me and said she was really interested in coaching softball. And so we decided she's gonna be our head softball coach for fast pitch. We haven't figured out or decided what we're gonna do, slow pitch in the spring, because she's still coaching track. But we'll figure that out. Mallory Means is gonna be her assistant for fast pitch. And Coach Pruitt is already coaching cross country, so we're just gonna flip that around. And Coach Means is gonna be the head cross country coach and Coach Pruitt is gonna assist her in that this year. So kind of changing some things up, but I think there's gonna be some really good things that come out of that. I don't know, for one, I bet another's gonna play softball now. So didn't want to before, but she'll run through a brick wall for Coach Pruitt. And so I think that's gonna be a really good thing for those girls and Coach Pruitt will do a great job with them. And I think Coach Means will do a great job with the cross country. So those are some changes there that have kind of belted over the last month and just kind of wanted to update everybody where we're at with, with all of that. But like I said, I, I think it'll be really good. There for a while, we weren't sure if there was even gonna be enough girls to play softball and I think now they've got plenty. So I think that's a good thing for the program. Other than that, just, it's kind of calm before the storm, so to speak, right now. And then we'll be hitting around running here in a few weeks.
All right, thanks, Bryce. Any new business on number 11?
No new business.
And number 12, I make a motion to adjourn, do I have a second? Desiree second, Judy?
Louisville?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?